All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order June 17th, 2021, Northbrook Public Library. Jennifer, would you please have a roll call?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Klaubinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Here.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we move into it, is there any item that a board member would like to pull off the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jennifer, could you please have a vote?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Klaubinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Kate, is there someone monitoring the livestream for comments?
We don't have comments.
Okay, so there are no longer. Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna make a change to the agenda. We have two presentations, I'd like to move up to this part of the agenda. The first will be Jill Franklin for the Climate Action Plan. The second will be Matt Farmer for the Cedar Lane Project Presentation. Jill, if you would please, come up to the stage and present the Climate Action Plan.
Thank you. Everyone has paper copies, I think we're...
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
As well as digital.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So hello, and thank you for having me here. I'd like to say first of all that I've really enjoyed serving on the Climate Action Planning Team, and I've really enjoyed the process of developing this plan. I'm going to give you a very brief overview of what the plan involves and how the library might participate in sustainability initiatives. Next slide. So the Climate Action Plan is on the library website, and you have through Monday to submit comments on it. The plan describes where the greenhouse gas emissions come from in Northbrook, and how much is released into the atmosphere from different sources. It describes how global warming might change our local climate, and the likely effects on human health, and the economy, and tree health, and just overall livability of this community. The plan establishes 10-year and 30-year goals for lowering greenhouse gas emissions, and it lists nearly 200 specific actions to take over the next 10 years in order to meet that first goal, the 10-year goal. Next slide. So the overarching goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout the community, and to avert the anticipated consequences of what is sometimes called "business as usual", or not doing much to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. More specifically, the village aims to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 35% below a 2010 baseline within the next 10 years. The bigger goal is to reduce emissions by 80% within 30 years, and both goals align with the Paris Agreement, and the United States and the state of Illinois have both committed to reducing emissions, they have a different goal, but by 2025. And then in 2018, the village of Northbrook signed on to the Greenest Region Compact, which is an agreement of over 125 communities in northeastern Illinois to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Those are some of the numbers, but in words, the goal, the overall goal, is to reduce dependence on fossil fuels, reduce waste, prioritize sustainable land use, and encourage biodiversity, and to support equity and livability. Next slide. This next slide is a chart, and in the top-left corner, you'll see the 2010 baseline that we're starting from. Some improvement has been made. You can see that in the next little bubble in 2018, and then you'll see the yellow line, and that shows the trajectory of improvements if this plan is carried out. So you can see there's some improvement at the 10-year mark, and then much more improvement. The line goes down much lower at the end, at the 30-year mark. And what you see in the blue section is the emissions that would be released if not much action is taken. And you can see the top of that line, the top of the blue section, is pretty much level with the 2018 point. Okay, next slide. The Climate Action Plan is divided up into eight categories called sectors, you can see them listed there, and each category has multiple objectives called strategies, and then the team identified nearly 200 actions to reach those objectives in the next 10 years. And, okay, next slide. The next slide shows just a snapshot of one page in the plan. So at the top is the category, or sector, called Waste Management. This is one strategy, this one is to reduce municipal solid waste by 5%, and then below that are listed four specific action items to take in the next 10 years. And the plan is called a Living Plan, so it will be reviewed regularly, and actions, these specific actions that are very effective, will be amplified or increased, new actions can be added in, other actions can be modified, so it will evolve over time. Next slide. All right, so to the library. So the village, for several years, has been increasing its commitment and interest in sustainability, and the library has as well. So in 2013, we developed a sustainability policy, and... and, I'm sorry. The purpose of the... well, and those of you who were on the board last year reaffirmed that policy, and the purpose of the policy is to serve as kind of a guiding principle for incorporating sustainability into all aspects of library operations, so facilities, and purchasing, and waste, and education. And, so the library has had this intention for some time already, and the library, we have implemented some actions to mitigate the library's carbon footprint. So for example, I won't review all of these, but for example, we compost in the staff lounge, and food waste is a big source of greenhouse gas emissions, at all different levels of the food production cycle. We use services to recycle books and plastic waste that's generated by the library, things like CD cases, things like that. With lighting, many of the light bulbs have been switched out for LEDs, which are very, very energy efficient, and in the new lobby, I'm sure you've seen the new reusable bags available for patrons who need a bag at checkout. That's very exciting. And then, of course, we've held educational programs over the years on a variety of sustainability topics. So that's what we've been doing, but what can we do going forward? Next slide. So we've done many things, and now the village is providing an impetus to the, really the rest of the community, the library, the park district, and businesses, and residents, for deepening our commitment to sustainability, and working collectively to achieve this goal that will improve the overall health of the community. So with the village investing in sustainability, this could be an opportune time to deepen the library's commitment to sustainability and community health as well, and one approach is to incorporate sustainability into everyday decisions and procedures. This would allow us to build on what we've already begun, but in a more integrated and habitual kind of way. So for example, and I'll just give a few examples, so for example, with purchasing, when choosing giveaways for summer reading, we might choose to email gift certificates to local businesses, or to give away books instead of a gift made of plastic. And we have done this, especially during the pandemic, but even before, and this is just an example of things that we could, something we could really commit to. And it kind of means, with purchasing, it sort of can mean thinking of kind of the life cycle of any item that's being purchased, and taking into account the social cost and the overall picture of what goes into manufacturing, and shipping, and how long the item will last, and discarding it, all of these things to give a fuller picture of the cost of any item, the kind of the social and more global cost. So another example is on here, the second item, zero-waste events. So in the Climate Action Plan, the village is committing to forming a zero-waste event policy. Now, the library already has an apparatus in place for something like this with our composting service. If we made a couple tweaks in purchasing choices and procedures, we too could have zero-waste events, and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and provide an educational opportunity for the staff and the public. Another example is with landscaping. So one of the big sectors of this, in the Climate Action Plan, is green space, and that encompasses many things, including creating green spaces that use less water, and fewer resources, like fertilizers and things like that, by using native plants, and which will create habitat for local wildlife, insects, all kinds of things. So the library could support the village goal, contribute to biodiversity, and reducing use of natural resources like water by planting native plants, not using petrochemicals, and not using leaf blowers. All of the, each of those specific elements are part of the plan, and key elements to supporting biodiversity and sustainable soil and land. Often, these, incorporating sustainability takes a bit of an initial effort, it takes a bit of initial investment, it means adjusting, making a little change, and adjusting to a little change, but then it can become an automatic habit and an established practice. And then, of course, the last item on that list is education, and enhancing, enhancing the environmental program that we're already doing would be an important way the library could support community education on all these important topics. Next slide. So what's next? As I mentioned, you have through Monday to review the full Climate Action Plan and submit comments on the village website. The village board will hold a public hearing and vote on the plan at the July 27th meeting. And I encourage you to learn more about the benefits of taking climate action. Some of those benefits are improved energy resilience, improved economic development, cost savings, improved air and public health, and I could go on. And then finally, I invite you to imagine the possibilities of a greener, healthier community for everyone who lives here and works here, and how the library can help make that happen. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. Before you go, we may have some questions.
Wonderful.
Take a minute to see.
Sure.
I know the first question I hit, as you mentioned, zero-waste events, but that's not a term that I'm familiar with, so could you explain that?
Oh my gosh, that's a great question. So the question is, what does zero-waste, a zero-waste event mean? So, at any event, imagine a little floret with food, and a big crowd, hard to imagine right now, but we all do remember that. So you might have plates, and cutlery, and cups, and you might have decorations. All of these things have to go somewhere when we're done with them. If they, if we can find a way to reuse the item, like if it's real silverware, you would wash it and reuse it, or we find a way to compost it, because you purchase compostable items, then there is no waste. Waste refers to what is going into the landfill, or being thrown away, but there's no "away", "away" doesn't exist, it's going somewhere, which is the landfill, which contributes to greenhouse gas emissions. And then even more specifically, and I won't go on forever here, I promise, but all of those things, like the plates, and the cutlery, and the decorations, they all took a lot of energy to manufacture, to ship, and to, you know, package. All of those inputs, all those resources that went into creating those things are for, if they're, if those items are used one time, saved for 30 minutes, and then going into the landfill, all of the resources that went into making those items and shipping them are being expended for 30 minutes of use. So zero-waste means more of a closed loop, and thinking of the whole life cycle. If this is a compostable plate or fork, then it took energy to make and ship here, but then we can compost it, it will go back into the soil, and serve a purpose by replenishing the soil.
Okay, so when you talk about the library trying to move towards zero-waste events for activities, are we then talking about changing our purchases, or trying to purchase recycled products when available, or products with fewer inputs, and then when we're done with using them, trying to compost them, or otherwise avoid trying to put them into the trash stream?
Yes, exactly. So it means choosing to purchase or use items that will not be thrown away, but will, you know, either be reused, like regular silverware and dishes, or decorations that could be reused, saved and reused, or, yeah, so it would require purchasing, instead of purchasing plastic, even if it's made of recycled materials, it would still end up in the garbage.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Kate, are we already having a committee inside the library that's focused on trying to implement some of these processes?
Jill is the chair of our green team, and does that, we actually already purchase a lot of compostable plates and items that we use for like Staff Development Day, and so, yes, that is something that they are always looking for ideas and implementing. We have not implemented specific things from the Climate Action Plan yet, because it's still, right, a very new item that's still being vetted, but that will definitely be something that the green team will be working on.
Thank you, and I'll just add one more comment. Sometimes these things, as I mentioned, that sometimes there's an initial investment, and so in some cases, these items cost more, and the reason is because they're incorporating the cost of all of it. They're incorporating a bigger picture into the dollar amount. Does that answer your question?
It does. Well, thank you. That was my question. Sharon, did you have questions you'd like to ask?
No, that was great presentation, thank you. I didn't realize the library had that resource, or was invested. That's really...
Thank you. Yeah.
I have questions about the...
Margaret, do you want to talk about the...
Oh, yes, sorry. I have questions about the guidelines, and specifically the 67% that goes towards building an energy, and what the recommendations are for construction projects, as we are about to look at the Cedar Lane, and we have future projects here, what the recommendations are for that, as opposed, as far as recycling, construction debris, and using recycled materials, et cetera.
You know, I, if you don't mind, I'm gonna actually, we're gonna bring Tessa and Michaela, who work over at the village in planning and development, next month, to talk to the board, so they might have a deeper knowledge to be able to address that. I'm not gonna put Matt on the spot, but if he happens to mention something, if he knows of anything during his presentation, he's welcome to do that, but otherwise, I think...
That's specifically about the Cedar Lane, though?
He's talking about Cedar Lane, but he works at the village, so my, I don't know if you guys have had more discussions on this, but definitely next month, and I can ask them to focus on that specifically, because Jill was really focused on the overarching plan. And I know the building piece is something we've talked about, so I already, I actually talked to Michaela yesterday to ask her to...
Great.
Focus on that next month.
Fabulous, thank you.
Did you have other questions for us?
No, it was really about the building and energy.
I can just give you a two-second answer, which is, and they, Michaela and Tessa will know more, but yes, there are some requirements to use, to dispose of things, you know, as many things as possible, send them to a reuse facility, or recycling facility, and there are county ordinances or requirements that pertain to this, so yes, there is stuff that's built into construction demolition waste.
Thank you.
Kayhan, would you like to ask any questions?
I was just curious with the Climate Action Plan, this is a village-level plan, so I'm assuming the library is just one stakeholder among all these other, like schools, and parks, and everything, everybody's got their own plan that they're executing, is that right?
So, and Michaela and Tessa will speak to this as well, but, yeah, so this plan is for the village, and many of these actions will be carried out by the village, but it is a community-wide plan, and is intended for other village entities, and including businesses and residents, to participate and take an active part in the plan. And so if, I don't know, Kate, it may be up to each entity to either develop their own plan, or sign on to this plan, and determine how they will implement it.
My understanding is that once the village approves it, they'll be looking to the other units of local government to see if we'd also like to sign on, so once that happens at the end of July, we'll talk about it, and see if this board would like to sign on as well, or whether there are additional things that we would want to address. The plan is very comprehensive, Anna, and I went to the open house yesterday only. Yeah, and there's a lot of stuff that I think would really apply to what we're doing here,
More questions?
Barbara, Jamie?
No.
I think that's all. Thank you very much for your presentation, and taking the time to answer our questions.
Thank you very much for having me.
Matt, would you like to come up?
You bet.
It's so hard to hear when people speak with noise.
Matt, to prepare you, we will have lots of questions.
Okay. I can hardly wait. All right, is everybody seeing the screen that I'm seeing?
They can see it, but we printed it out and sent it to them electronically, but it's live streaming here.
Okay, so I will just announce what page I'm on. So first screen, first of all, thank you for letting me come and speak with you a little bit about the Cedar Lane Project. My name is Matt Farmer, I'm the village engineer, and I've got an exciting project to share with you today. How do I go to next? Something like that. Okay, so on the second page, this is the top half of our flyer that we sent out. We had a public information open house on June 10th, it was from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. We actually had it over at 1657 Shermer, which is now on the next slide. The next slide, it says "Public Information Meeting", it shows a location map. This is just basically to show that the project limits are on Cedar Lane from Walters Avenue to Cherry Lane, and in the public information open house that we had, we had about five or six boards that we shared. You're gonna see all of them tonight in this presentation. They are also available online, if you want to see the full board. I've had to kind of snip things out a little bit, so that you can make it easier to see, but we have them online if you like. So on to the next slide, this is the first page that shows a plan view, kind of a helicopter view of what you're looking at. The top section is existing, and the bottom section is proposed. We are starting down at the intersection of Walters and Cedar, and north is to the right, so the library and Village Hall are to the right on this page. The big difference on these pages, on this page, is really just the multi-use path that we're proposing to install. The multi-use path will go in the Parkway slash Parking Lane on the west side of the road. In order to get the 10-foot path in, we needed to lose the parking that was on the west side of the road, but starting at Walters, and then we go up to Cedar. And then if you flip the page, now you should be looking at a page that shows a slight curve in the road, it shows a little bit of Village Hall and the library. So the main points on this, on this page are all of the parking, and some of the changes, you can see what we've done for the changes, it's not a straight-through road anymore. One of the issues that we're trying to resolve is traffic is going a little faster than we would like it to go on Cedar. And one of the ways we slow traffic down is to, there are multiple ways we can do that, but one of them is called a road diet, which is kind of when we squeeze the road a little bit. The current traffic when you're out there today, when you park your car, you have probably six or seven feet behind your car before you get to the edge line, and then you have the two lanes, and the same on the other side. This area will be, have a more of a feel like the Glen, down in Glenview, where everything's a little tighter. Drivers tend to go, a reasonable driver will tend to drive at a speed that they feel comfortable. The speed limit is where they should stop, but that's just not always what happens. So when a driver feels comfortable, when the road is wide open, and they can see everything, they just drive faster. When everything is squeezed and tight, when they're driving closer to the back of cars, when they're not sure what's gonna happen, a reasonable driver feels a little uncomfortable, and an uncomfortable driver drives slower. So that's the goal of some of this work. In addition, we've made a big change over by the library. We have, today you have parking across the street over by the school, and in the future, the plan is to put parking on both sides of the road. The way we were able to pull that off is we've pushed the road a little bit to the west, through the curve. The curve helps in that now a driver can't just see all the way, they can only see partway down the road, and then they, then they hit the curve to see the rest. That's good for slowing drivers. But also, the, today you have a right, if you're northbound on Cedar, and you want to turn right at the library, or you want to turn left, you have a lane for each of those turns. In the future condition, there will be only one lane leaving northbound, so we were able to use some of the other space to put some parking in front of the library, so that not everybody had to park across the street, and then, and then come across. I'm going to have you guys flip to the next page, so now, now you should be looking at a page that has a bunch of red arrows, and a better view of Village Hall, and some stop signs, and the library. So what you're gonna see on this page is a little better view of the intersection of Cedar Lane and, Cedar Lane and Cherry Lane. Today, Cherry Lane does not have a stop, they just, they free-flow, and then Cedar has to stop. The future condition is planned to have a four-way stop, and always stop at that location. That's how we were able to get rid of the left and right turn lanes going northbound, because now you don't have, now everybody just has to take a turn. When everybody takes a turn, there's not so much traffic that we need a left and a right turn lane, one lane will be sufficient for what we need there. Also, a big addition... Also, a big addition to what we've done is, is the multi-use path that's on the school side of the road on, on Cedar gives all of the people who park on that side of the road the opportunity to make a choice. Today, when you park on that side, all you can really do is just cross right where your car is because there is no good place to cross. In the future, you'll be able to go to the front of your car and you can follow that path, either the left or the right, and you can have a controlled place to cross. That will, I'm, I'm hopeful that that will attract a lot of people to take that, to take that crossing. It will not direct everybody to take that crossing. If you're a very mobile person and quick and you're in a hurry, you're probably going to just cross where you always have right at your car. And if that's a choice you want to make, you feel it's safe, that's where they'll go. But if you're a little slower, you have some mobility issues, you're, you're toting a couple kids with you, now you have the opportunity to make a choice to go over to the, to the west side of the road and either come down at the cross, at the stop sign or at the pedestrian crossing. The pedestrian crossing intention is to, is to have the push button with the strobing lights that, to cross there. This is kind of considered a mid-block crossing. Typically, we only want, we want crossing that intersections. That's where, where pedestrians legally are allowed to cross. Anywhere else is technically jaywalking. It's an intersection with the parking lot, although it's just a parking lot, it's not a road, so it's a little gray. But that's why we want to put in, that's why we want to put in the push buttons and the pedestrian crossings. We're going to do the same over at village hall on the south side. So there'll be two opportunities to cross. The road is, you don't have to cross as many lanes, as much distance because it's squeezed and, and, and we'll have a better marking for pedestrians. We'll have the piano key marking so a driver can, should be able to see everything better. They'll feel squeezed, they'll be going slower already, which will make it easier to cross the street. All of these pieces come together and the goal is to make it safer for pedestrians to get across. Another item that the library brought up to us that they're having issues with, from time to time, you have a delivery truck who is not familiar with the area and they come in and they, the top of the truck hits the overhang on the building. Very inconvenient, so we want to, we want to get rid of that situation. So what we're working on is an alternate route for your delivery trucks and your buses. Not for passenger cars, but just delivery trucks and buses or garbage trucks, that, that sort of thing. They can come down, follow the red arrow down the village hall line, go to the north. Today, there's a fire lane there. We're going to improve, it kind of looks like two sidewalks next to each other, but that, it's actually there for fire trucks to be able to make that drive. We're going to improve that. And then a bus or a delivery truck can turn left and stay away from the entire overhang. That's how they can get in and get out. It's good for buses. I, I dropped a tiny little bus in there. It took me forever to find a bus and put it on the angle, but it was worth it, I think. So that tiny little buses now, when buses get out, they're always on the right side, the passenger side. So now they're letting, they're letting people out the passenger side right into the building as opposed to on the other side where they have to cross in front of the bus. There's a, there's risk in crossing in front of a bus, the driver not being able to see what's going on. So there's a lot of benefits to that situation and then out they go. Your lane for this section that I'm looking at is wide enough for two-lane traffic. So that proposal is to have anybody who parks in there, they don't have to drive all the way around the library to get out. They can come in here and they can back out and go right back out. If, if they make it past the fire lane, now they're in, they have to, now they have to go around the library, but everybody else can stop there. Look at this page to see if there's anything else I'd like to talk about. Okay, so we're going to go to the next page. This is a typical section. A typical section, the intention of that is as if you're standing in the road, the top and, and looking, looking in the road, down the road. So you can see Walters Avenue to village hall. That's from the south end of the project to, to village hall. Currently on the left, top left corner, there are two cars that are parked there and then two cars in the middle are driving. And then in the proposed condition on the right, top right, we still have a parking lane and then the two lanes for the two cars to drive, but then we've added the multi-use path. And then on the bottom left hand of this page, under the existing condition is where I described to you how a car parks and they have a six or seven feet of distance behind them. That makes drivers going by feel very comfortable because they can see that there's no risk and they'll go faster. We have squeezed them, like, very much like the Glen. I, I'm sure you are familiar, you've been there before. I went to the Glen when it was crowded and my comfortable speed was about 17 miles an hour. I, I just wasn't comfortable going any faster than that. So that was the bottom right-hand corner showing the squeeze. So we're going to go to the next page. This is the second page of typical sections. Possibly the most important one in front of the library. So we have on the left hand, on the top side, the existing, you can see you have lots of room behind the car. You have a lane going southbound and two lanes going north, a left turn and a right turn. We have, we are proposing to, to fix that or change that with a multi-use path, two parking lanes and a north and south lane. If you, when you leave today, you'll see some white pavement, white paint marks on the pavement. They go to, just dashes, they go to the north and then they curve and they cut across the pavement and they go back. That is the location of the proposed center line of what we've described. It's quite drastic when you see the curve and cut back. So take a look at that when you go out and you'll be able to get a feel for what we're proposing. All right, so I'm going to the next page. It's the goals and highlights of Cedar Lane reconstruction. So as discussed, we're, we want to slow traffic down. We want to make it a little safer for pedestrians. We're proposing a road diet. That's when we squeeze everything. Example like in Glenview. Some of the enhanced pedestrian mobility items are signed mid-block crossings on Cedar Lane and always stop at Cedar Lane and Cherry with a 10-foot wide multi-use path. And then specific for the library, a one-way northbound connection for village hall and buses and delivery trucks. On-street parking on the east side of Cedar Lane in front of the library. Today, you don't, you don't have that on-street parking. And then there will be landscape improvements. We had, we're in the very beginning stages of that. We had a meeting with our, with a landscape architect just today to kind of give him an idea what we're thinking to do. We're working with the library and with the village to, to have a one cohesive campus feel. He hasn't come back with a scope yet, but we basically said all we're really looking for is spectacular. So if he can design that for us and get it to us, then we're ready to go. So with that, I would like to take any of your questions.
Thank you. So what is the timing as to how the project will play out in terms of planning that's remaining and then construction?
It's a, it's not a very big area, but it's a lot of work going on in a bigger, in a little area. So because of that, you, you can't squeeze in a whole bunch of work crews at once to do a bunch of work. So they'll have one or two crews going. We want to have this project on the street for, for bid in January sometime, January, early February. I'd like to see of 22 and I would like to see some constructions start in March so that they can be pretty well finished by August, which is a good time for the landscaping to come in. We, because you've got to wait until after August to start to do planting. And then that gives the landscapers the fall to get planted. They will be done with 95% of the landscaping in the fall. There are some trees and plants that need to be planted in the spring. You can't dig them up until, till the winter and then those would go in later. But that really depends on what we select for, for planting. So, so the summer of 2022, which is right around the corner.
And so when the project is ongoing, I'm assuming Cedar will still be open for traffic for the full length?
Yeah, we, we don't have a traffic control plan yet, but in, in my mind, in my mind, it is likely to be one, one-way road during the duration of the, of the project, southbound. So, so you will not be able to get to village hall or the library from the south. You have to come southbound. But we will, we will require the contractor to maintain access at all times so your patrons can get into the library using your parking. Now, that being said, all of the parking on Cedar will be not available during construction because even, even if they, even if they complete one section and then they move to the other side, as cars go through, you, you don't want to have cars trying to back in and out into a construction zone. There are safety issues for construction when, when a worker is working and a person's driving. We want that person to have the opportunity to make a choice to go one way or the other and, and we want them to be able to go the direction where there's just nothing over there. So we don't want to have people parking cars there because they may then choose to go to the construction zone if they have to fear. So, so all of that parking will be gone, but the, but the parking lot will be accessible. It will be busy. It will be difficult. I don't want to pretend it won't be, but we, we will not cut off the parking to, to the library.
And where will the construction crew be staging out of? Will they be using the village lot on the north side of the river that's a block away or will they be using the village lot?
Staging will, you know, once they set up traffic control and they get, say, stage one, we do one lane southbound, which ends, actually ends up being in the current northbound lane. Then all of their equipment will be over on the other side of the road. That's, they'll just leave everything there every night as they're doing the work and then they swap, they switch. And then they will leave all their construction equipment on this side of the road. So, so they, they should be able to just use the construction zone as their staging area.
In terms of the finished project, when the four-way stop is implemented, looking at the distance between the two north and south sides of Cedar, how is that imagined to work?
So it's an always stop and it's a staggered intersection. It, we, we looked at trying to find a way to bring those legs closer together, both Cedar North and Cedar South. And to do that would have had either a significant impact on the library because of that corner or a real significant impact on the homes on the other corner. So those were just not feasible. The, the benefit is they're, they're staggered. This, this is not, if you were designing a new subdivision, you would, you would never design a staggered intersection stop. But these staggered intersection stops across the country, across Illinois, there's a lot of them. They function. You're, you're close enough to be able to communicate. The, the, the stop sign, all a stop sign is, is a way for you to communicate with the next guy next to you. It's just a communication device. So you're able to see everybody, you're close enough and it, it will function like it's supposed to. It's not so far away that, that it'll be complicated. I have been through several four-way stops where the long legs are 400 feet apart. It's a little awkward, but even those function. So, so this will work just fine. It won't be an issue. And, and then we'll have good pedestrian crossings, crossing Cedar. Today, there are no, or, yeah.
On Cherry.
Cherry, Cherry. Today, there are no pedestrian crossings on Cherry. So we'll have, we'll have two crossings on Cherry so that anybody coming from the north, coming to the library, going to village hall, will have a good place to, to cross.
One of the things we had been considering a couple of years ago was putting signage on the corner near Cedar and Cherry. And so with this stop, the signs we were considering would have been multimedia or having some form of, you know, lights to it. Would that be something that we would now not be able to consider at that stop?
No, we've, it wouldn't exclude that, I don't think so. The, we are actually making a, it's hard to tell on this little print, but the green arrow, the green area on the northeast corner is a sizable green space that we're creating there. Because we, because we can't put the parking too close to the intersection. You have to stop a certain distance back to be safe for cars coming in and out. So we're making a sizable green space there so that, that could be a potential area or back, back on your side of the sidewalk. But I wouldn't consider this work to, to exclude the opportunity to put a changeable sign up. That, now the changeable side still has to go through permitting through, through Northbrook, but, but I, I wouldn't consider this work to cause any issues for them.
And my other, one last question for me. When you look at the library entrance and the curve that's going to be implemented onto Cedar, so the library, when you're leaving the parking lot, you're on a slope upwards and you're looking at what, you know, drivers will be curving towards that entrance from the north or away from it from the south. As you have a driver leaving the parking lot, is there going to be, you know, increased risk to that driver of not being able to see around the curve in either direction?
They will be able to see to the left just fine, to the right, you know, after they stop at the sidewalk, that, you know, they'll have to pull up a little bit. And, and we, we will have to make some adjustments. But this, this doesn't show the paving coming down into the parking lot too far, but the crossing, the, the cross slope as a pedestrian crossing the driveway is too steep today. So we would need to make that less steep, which will make a, kind of a flatter area up top. So we'll, we'll definitely take a closer look at that to make sure that, that the drivers will be able to see. What, really what we'll need to do is just be careful with what gets planted on, on the corner to the right to make sure that there isn't something that's tall in there that, that is blocking that view. But today, I know, I know there can be a little bit of an issue because of the speed that the traffic is going, but when, if you have traffic going slower, that should also make it easier to get in and out.
Okay. And the only other issue right there is, I mean, that's really the entrance to our ramp from Cedar going down into the parking lot. So will that require a redesign of the ramp?
What, what ramp?
So where the pedestrian sign is on the north side of the entrance?
The handicap ramp.
Yeah, the handicap ramp.
No, I think, and we've been in discussions with some of the stairs and the ramp, there've been some talks about that. I, I believe we're going to, we'll end up taking the same elevation so that we can match in to, to what you have. We can, we could pull that off or we can get the sidewalk just to, to match in where it's at and not make any changes. So we, we won't have to have any changes to your facility. Now, you may be changing them anyway.
That's what we know.
And if that's the case, we would just work all that to make sure it works out.
More, I think you have questions?
I have, yeah, I have several.
Okay.
Okay, first, the additional parking lot that's across from the village hall on the west side of Cedar now?
Yep.
Is that necessary? I mean, is that something that you guys needed that the, I shouldn't say you guys, that the village needed that was not accommodated by the parking lot behind the village hall?
So there's existing parking there now today. This overall plan because of, because of the angle of the, of the parking spots, we didn't, it, it would kind of look like we ended up with a whole bunch more spots, but we didn't. We really probably lost just a few.
Okay.
And that's, and that's because of all the little green spaces you see and the curve in the road. We'd lose a few there. It, it depends on the day.
Right.
Some days, village hall isn't too bad, but other days during voting, during other activities, all of those spots are taken, including further to the south. And then I know when the library has different activities, that some of the library cars kind of spilled down into that direction. So I think there is a need, there, there has been really no discussion to say, we don't need all this parking because it's never used.
Okay.
It gets used. It's, it's not used every day, all the time, but when you need it, you need it.
Right. Okay. Is there overall with the additional bike and pedestrian lane and then taking away from the green space, what is the net gain or loss of green space? Do we have more pavement, less pavement?
Hmm. You know, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. And now we, we are talking about opportunities to, to use other materials. We're, you know, we're, we're talking about green materials and the village has, has talked about how we can get into that for some mainstream items. There is permeable concrete where you, where the water just goes right through the concrete. And those are great ideas, although sometimes they scare. I'm an engineer, so I kind of like the stuff that I know works. It is, it is cheap, but this could be a good opportunity on a 10-foot wide bike path where we're not salting it all the time and it doesn't get the load of the cars. So even though it's not green space, it is, it is helping with drainage, helps to bring the water back in the ground. Same with the parking stalls, those could be a permeable paver.
So much of the Greenbrier parking lot?
Greenbrier parking lot or the Park District is doing some real, really nice stuff up at their Sportsman's on Dundee. I had to approve- Um, I had to approve those plans, so I've got a real nice copy of what they did and how they did it, so. We could do a little copying after they say, hey, we like this, we didn't like that. Um, I don't, I don't have a straight answer really for you on if we, if we created more impervious or not. But, um, I can say because of all the extra width. That was behind the cars today, there was a lot of. There was a lot of area today that is impervious. That's kind of not used. So we're, we're at least using all of our impervious space in the future.
Okay. Um. My next question is really more about the library traffic, so I'm going to skip that one for now. Um, at the. Corner of Cherry and Cedar on the. Southwest corner, or sorry, south, yeah, southwest corner. Are we, are you proposing to? Um, take down trees that are there? It's a little hard to tell from the.
Yeah, actually.
Cause there's some beautiful trees there.
Where it's, yeah, uh, where it's not hard to tell what we're doing. Flip over one page, one page to the top and bottom sheet.
Oh, I think that's where it was. The one?
Yes, so it's the one where you, where you see, uh, the existing Cedar Lane and the proposed Cedar Lane. Yes, those, those, all of those trees currently are shown e- either in the path or in the root zone where the trees would, would, the roots would be damaged to a point where. Uh, the tree would not survive. We are working with the village forester to see what can we do to try to. Try to spread it a little bit so that we, we end up with some room to save some of these trees. Uh, it would require pulling. The curb closer to the library and pushing the. Which causes issues for the roadway because we've already squeezed as, about as much as we can go. It would also require pushing the path. To the school. And the school has been very good with us, um, to say, hey, we want to work this out. We want a good path, but. The more we push into the school, the less land they have to do their activities, so. Um, now, any trees that we take down, we're absolutely going to replant and, and through the whole corridor, I expect to have. Quite a few trees replanted.
But replanting like the tree on the corner. That's a.
The tree on the corner, I think was unimpacted. There's a.
Is it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not extant, so we're expecting to be able to work around that. But the row of trees unfortunately is right in. Um, where the, where the proposed path is going to go.
Alright, um. The. And I think I know the answer to this, but the, at the opposite corner then, same corner, but the opposite crosswalk. There's a crosswalk all the way on the, um. Sort of the, where Cedar jogs, so it's on the. East side of that intersection. This here. Is, does that just because it's closer to the stop sign rather than up here where the traffic is going to be?
I see. So what you just showed me was, uh, if you're, if you're looking. Uh, at the intersection of, of Cherry and Cedar. We have a crosswalk. On the far. West side of Cherry and we also have a far. A crosswalk on the far east side of the other leg of Cherry. It spreads them out. And your question was, why not just run it right, kind of right down the middle of the, of the intersection? Uh, we talked about that. And. It's, there were, there were pros and cons as to where the, where the people are walking from and where they're going to. It's a, also a little. The side, the intersection is already a little awkward. And then to do one crossing right down the middle. Is a little more awkward. Um, we, when we design traffic. And roads and parking, our goal is to design something that looks kind of like everything else in the rest of the country. All the civil engineers want to do that, so that when you go to Wisconsin, when you go to Maryland, when you go. Everything is pretty much the same thing. That's why all your stop signs are the same, your yield signs are the same. Um. You, you start putting, uh, odd things out there. And somebody else driving through may not. Recognize what, what's happening. Um, it's kind of like the first time you go through a roundabout. You know, after a while you're used to it, but. Um, we talked about that and, and in the end. Uh, the, the pros outweighed the cons for doing just the two crosswalks on the far edges.
Can, can, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure. Are you talking about the north-south ones, right? Like, are you asking, Maura, like, why there isn't one? Going east-west?
Yeah.
No, going north-south, but that was going to be, the east-west was going to be my next question.
That's my question because that is a very, I've almost gotten hit in that intersection many times.
Right, but there's a hill coming up.
Well, that's, that was my question.
That's a hill. And so I've gone up that hill and just by nature of the driver that I am. Like I slowed down at the top, but now, how are you going to know there's a stop sign there? Because you're, you're literally coming up a hill and this has happened to me before where. You come up to it and it's there. I know you're going to have blinky lights, but. That hill coming up out of, you know, the train. That, that's a crazy intersection. Then to put a crosswalk in it, you're like.
And then people backing, people backing up. People backing up on the hill, if there's traffic, then multiple people are going to be stopped on the hill? Am I understanding that right?
There, so, so the signs will be plenty visible. You, you are coming up over a hill, but you're not, the, the sign, um. We'll, we'll, we'll have to rework the curb line in there, but you will be able to plainly see the stop sign at, kind of at the top of the hill. Is where you'll see that. You'll stop and then you'll go. We, I would be uncomfortable throwing in a crosswalk today and with just a, with just, uh, the yellow sign and hope people. Catch that, but now they're stopping. They're, they're stopping at that location, uh, and then they're going again. Um, it, it should function just fine most of the time, just like most of our stop signs do. During rush hour, when a train comes through, it's going to back up. Just like our stop signs do on Walters, but they back up for a short amount of time. Uh, but the, the benefit and the safety that you get out of that is going to outweigh. The slight delay that you get from, from the stop. So that will be visible. You'll be able to see it just fine. Um, and, uh, and, and the backups will be. From time to time, depending on the train that's coming through. Otherwise. It will operate very much like the stop sign does. At Walters and Cedar. There's more traffic on Walters.
Yeah, but there's not a hill, right?
There's no hill, but, um, I don't, I don't expect the hill to be an issue for vision. And most people are not with stick shifts anymore. It was kind of a big deal thirty years ago where the hill would be an issue of stopping. Um, but, but the hills are not really that big of a, of an issue anymore.
Walters and Cedar used to be two stop, now it's four, it's all way, right?
Walters is always stop.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we were concerned, the reason that that didn't go for a long time is we were very concerned that would back up so bad that it would back up through the light. At Shermer and, and Walters. And, uh, it, it doesn't do that, except for on the very rare case when you get a double train that, that comes through. Uh, but after five minutes it relieves itself and, and is back to normal.
And then is there a? There doesn't seem to be a pedestrian. Crosswalk or is it just that it's existing that runs, um, east to west crossing?
There.
Cedar.
Yeah, it's hard to tell on this page. Um, we, we did the high visibility crosswalks on. Cherry. And not to say that the high visibility crosswalks are out of, out of, um. The realm of what we would put in. Crossing Cherry on both sides, but there will be a crosswalk. On the south leg of Cherry and the north leg of Cherry. On the east leg of, I'm sorry, of, of Cedar, the south leg of Cedar. So there will be a crosswalk at all four legs.
Cause there's. I would say of the intersections we're looking at, that intersection has the most. Pedestrian and bicycle traffic right now.
Walking to Greenbrier, right? That's the one you're talking about? Yeah, I agree.
And people, no one stops where they should there.
Well, because they're coming up the hill and they fly to the left.
Right. And if they're coming down Cedar, and this will be helped, I guess, but no one ever stops there either. They just sort of.
Right.
Breeze through.
Now they'll have to stop. It'll make it better for the interaction between a driver and a pedestrian. And, and, and there will be cross, it doesn't show it on this page great, but it, there will be a crossing, uh. For each of those. Maybe it's on the other page.
So I guess my last comment would be, I'd like to see. There to be a. More aggressively environmental, um, approach to this so that there's. So that we're not losing trees or we're not, or so that there's, because replacing established trees with these little.
And, and, and taking down a tree that's ten inches is not the same as putting up a tree that's four.
Right.
Uh, absolutely. We, we're, that's why we're, 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 um, working with a consultant to look at each tree individually to see. Cause some species can tolerate root pruning more than other species, so there. Um, there may be certain species in here that can handle, uh, getting inside that critical root zone, which is about six feet. To get within, closer than six feet, it's very difficult for a tree to survive. Um, we're working with a forester to see what we can do to, to mitigate this. Uh. It's, it's a difficult situation because we're, we're going to run into. Uh, situations all over town when we implement our master bicycle pedestrian plan to get more people on bikes, more people walking. But the place to put those is in our parkways. Our parkways are where we plant our trees. So we're, we're trying to balance that. That equation.
Right.
To, just to get the overall best situation.
Will the parking on Cherry right from the south leg to the north leg of Cedar? Would that be re- eliminated or is there still going to be a parking lane on the north side of Cherry?
I'm sorry, say it, say it one more time.
So on the north, um, side of Cherry, there's a parking lane? As you get to the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Is that parking lane going to be remain or will that be eliminated until you pass the stop sign?
Uh, you, you're not allowed to park within, uh, I think it's twenty-five feet of an intersection. So there will be, there will be some loss of parking, probably at least through the, the first driveway. Uh, that we'll have to, we'll have to make some changes to that because you, you can't have parking right next to an intersection.
Okay.
So there, there will be some, uh, parking loss there.
Does that mean there's going to be a bump out on the north side of Cherry? And the reason I ask is because you typically have cars that'll pass one another right there.
Mm-hmm.
On the, going, um, westbound.
Right. And, and the reason you have cars passing there, uh, is because somebody's trying to turn left while they're waiting for somebody to come this way. You go around them to the right. All of that goes away when, when you have the stop, go, stop, go. There's, there's no reason anymore to, to pass.
I would put my money on someone turning right from the north leg of Cedar. To then turn left, you know, kind of go straight to the zigzag. While you have someone coming from the east leg of Cherry, then trying to pass them. I would really put my money on that happening if there's not a kick out.
Yeah. We'll take a look at that. Uh, and, and, uh, the north leg of Cedar, today they're only allowed to turn right. They will be allowed to make all maneuvers in the future. They'll be able to go right, left or straight.
I live on Cherry and I can tell you regularly pulling in on my driveway, I get passed in all directions.
Yeah. Okay. Well, look, I'm glad you pointed that out, so we'll look at that to make sure. That, um, because what we don't want to do is have a situation where. Drivers are trying to pass each other. And that was one of the reasons we did the bump outs down on Walters. Is somebody was trying to turn left and somebody, or they might be waiting for a pedestrian. And then the pedestrian is trying to cross and somebody tries to pass him on the right and they don't see that pedestrian there. It's a very scary situation. So the bump outs solve that problem. We'll look at it for this.
Okay. Sharon, do you have questions?
I saw a question down there.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. Hi. Um, you talked about the purpose of this is to reduce speed, that that's the culprit or the goal. In my experience at the Glen with the road diet. There are so many incidents of accidents, road rage. Stoppage because people are not patient when people are cutting across. And so my question is. What are we sacrificing or trading here? Are we trading reduced speed for more adjuvant? Um, it's not pleasant parking there with that road diet arrangement.
Right.
So I think I would ask. In your presentation. How are you stacking up the trade-offs?
So. There is a trade-off, uh, and, and the, and part of that is. When you go to, to, uh, Mariano's, somebody drives through the Mariano's parking lot and somebody backs out. My attitude and most attitude is, okay, they're backing out. I'm going to let them come out because I might try to park or I might, I might just be leaving. Um, but generally that's kind of understood that that's what's happening in a parking lot. But then when you get into a roadway situation and somebody tries to back out. And then you get the honking or the swerving or whatever else happens. Um, there has to be a change in attitude as, and, and the change is. Almost forced in the squeeze of, of the roadway. Now we've, we've spent some time, um, in, in, in the Glen or in other areas. And yes, you, you run into that, but because people are going slower. Uh, they are able to react faster to certain situations. They might honk their horn. But they're unlikely to make contact with anything. They're, they're unlikely to make contact with a pedestrian or a bicyclist. Um, by putting, by putting the ten-foot multi-use path on the other side of the, of the road. That gives that, those people the opportunity to cross at a particular location. Then when drivers who are, it's, it's generally the same drivers eventually, it's generally same drivers over and over that drive that road. They start to recognize where the pedestrians cross. Right now it's everywhere. There's, there's no, who knows where they're going to cross. Um, so, so there is a balance and you're right. There, there will be some aggravation. There will be some frustration. Um, there will be a lot of it in the first six months. And then it'll start to taper off.
I think you're being idealistic because you're dealing with a population that has. Much of its sense of. Hmm. We're, we're expecting to be able to do what we want to do when we do it.
Sure.
Um, entitlement.
Yeah.
Um, the other part is that, um. If, we're talking about education. You can't just. Change the, the whole configuration and the expectations without some broad. Education of the public as to what to expect and. Because we're used to swinging in and swinging out and there's no concern on what's on either side, so. I would encourage you to think about how you're going to educate people.
Yeah.
On what to expect.
That's, uh, a, and, and we will. That'll be, and it'll be on the website. There'll be advertisements, but. Um, my experiences with education is it, it works. When the person I want to educate wants to consume the thing I'm telling them. If they have no interest in what I'm telling them, then, then the education is when they show up. Uh, similar to the person who's never gone to the Glen before. Uh, they, they're not educated in that, but they, they figure it out pretty fast when they, when they.
I have a comment about the Glen. You keep comparing this to the Glen and it's very different because of the Glen, you've got commercial. Establishments on both sides. People who are driving through there are specifically. Driving through there to get to a destination and not as a throughway. If they were going on a throughway, they'd stay on. Patriot or whatever that street is.
Right.
So it's very different. So people are not. Driving along that path to get from point A to the point B, which is what they do on Cedar. And so we don't have people pulling in and out and driving slowly, so I don't think it's a valid comparison and. I don't think it's fair to say, well, it's just like the Glen. It works there, so it'll work here. Because these are very different situations. One is a kind of quasi-urban situation and this is.
Yeah.
Decidedly not. You have a school on one side and then. Two institutional buildings on the other.
Yeah.
But your goal is to find a parking place.
Pardon me?
Your goal is to find a parking place, whether you're in the Glen or you're coming to the library or to the school.
Right.
So.
But most people going down Cedar, I think, are using it. To get from. A lot of people are using it just to get from Cherry to Walters and not to find a parking space.
You, you may find that some people that do that today don't want to do that in the future because they don't enjoy the. They don't want to be interrupted by.
But where will they go? They're not going to go down Shermer because of the train, so where they go?
They could go to Greenbrier, right?
But that's a school. You don't want people.
Yeah, it's not a good.
That's, and you can't even turn left.
So, so when I, when I am comparing to the Glen, I, I'm really trying to give the feel of the tightness of the road.
Right.
There, there will be. Benefits similar to what the Glen has to this location, but it, it is not. It is not the silver bullet, uh, to, to the issues. It will make an improvement. Uh, it'll be similar to that, but. You're right. Not, it will not be exactly the same.
I think the, the. Negatives of this, the loss of trees, the increase in pavement, what appears, and the. Awkwardness, we're moving an already staggered intersection and making it more staggered. I don't see how that outweighs the benefits myself.
Another question. Um, I mean, in, in principle, I like a lot of what you're proposing because it seems to be promoting safety and. Uh, slowing things down. I guess my question is. Have there been growing concerns in recent years about safety around this area? That now this is a concern? Um, I guess my question is, why now as opposed to? You know, a few years ago, has, has it gotten less safe because of increased traffic?
I, it, we've had a lot of complaints just about being able to cross. Uh, we've, we've heard, we've heard from library staff of, of. Complaints being able to cross. We've heard that from our. Complaints being able to cross, we've heard that from our uh, from our people who come to Village Hall. Um, we've heard complaints from the school. They, they don't like the fact that the parking on that side does not have a curb, they've had people who have driven through the bushes. Um, so they want a, they want a solid barrier to, to stop cars that park on that side. Uh, why this hasn't happened ten years ago, I, I don't, this, this uh, plan. Has landed in the CIP for, for this work, um, for next year.
I think there's ways to address the parking without. Having such a radical change.
And, and I would encourage anybody with, you know, we had, we had the open house uh, last week where, where people came and we, this is, this is what we did. We, except we did it kind of one-on-one and went through the boards. Um, that opportunity is not gone, uh, if, if you would like to write a letter or an email saying, hey, this is my concern. Uh, we, we look at all of these together to, to balance, to make sure that we either miss the mark or we're on target. Um, and we, we weigh those out against what we're hearing.
Maura, did you have any thoughts on how the fire lane will impact the library?
Oh, sorry. No, my only thought there was whether or not the, and I actually think I, it doesn't work, I was wondering if that. That parking should be angled, but that doesn't work if it's two-way, does it, or could it? Whether or not the, so the, if the parking between the new fire lane and Cedar, if those should be angled spots, if that would. Help the situation, and I'm not sure if it would, it just might give a little bit more space to what's now going to be two-way traffic.
So, would you angle it so that the south parking spots are angled towards the west? And that the north parking spots are angled um, more towards the east, or how would you angle it?
Um, angle it in the, it would have to be in the direction of traffic, right?
But that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So once you, once you angle your parking spots, you, then you have dictated that that's a one direction.
Yeah.
I think she's trying to do opposite, opposing angles, so.
But, but if you did opposing angles, you, you can't get to the other side.
Right.
You can't, you can't come in and cut a real hard left, and nobody is allowed to use. The fire lane, except for your buses and your.
Where, and your, the fire lane is here, I think I'm misunderstanding the plan then.
So on the east side of the, where the red arrows are, that's the fire lane that's not for all traffic.
Going there, so I'm wondering if, so the people coming in here would have to park this way and people. Oh, so you're right, I see, these people, you're never coming this way unless you're driving the fire lane, okay, that's why it doesn't work. Never mind, you could angle one side and not the other, I suppose.
Um, yeah, now you, you, you angle and you lose parking.
Okay, then, never mind.
Do any other board members have comments on the fire lane?
I, I have just one, would you put a stop sign right there for the buses coming in, you just don't want them like ju- driving into either. Either way traffic, you have all these stop signs, but I might think about putting a stop sign so that these buses stop here before pulling into this lot with. Two-way traffic.
Sure, uh, it.
Right.
It, it, that is probably.
Kind of natural.
Yeah, we, so after we make any change, any major change, and we keep an eye on it, we. We have predictions from other changes that we've done other places of how we expect it to perform. But you still have to watch it, and if you're, if you're seeing any issues, then you come back and you tweak.
So Matt, you've been on the firing line for a while, um, I don't know if there are any more questions or if we're ready to thank Matt and. Let them have a nice evening.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for taking the time. Okay, now, so the next item on the agenda is going to Kate's staff report, Kate, let me.
Oh, I get to, I get to hold the mic, um, thanks Jay, so I wanted, uh, I just had a couple. Reminders um, for the board, but also wanted to make sure everyone saw that a new village manager was announced. Today, starting on uh, September first, Cara Pavlasek. I'm not sure if I'm saying her last name right, I should know that, cause I used to live in Oak Park, which is where she will be coming from, so. Um, so it is exciting to have that announcement. And also that the board can sign up for summer reading, we talked about it last month, it's now officially live. Um, you can do so online or at any of the service desks on the second and third floor. Um, so if you have not yet, I would encourage you to do that. And then the last thing uh, that I wanted to mention from my report was just the ALA conference coming up. Next week, I did send instructions out to you yesterday, and those, um, because we are sharing the login. Uh, which I sent to you in an email. We've put together, Jennifer's put together a Google sheet, so if. Depending on what sessions you want to go to, if you could please make sure to put your name and what you're going to, or whether you're. Visiting the exhibit hall, or whatever you're going to be using the login for, um, just so that we don't have uh. Duplication, cause then it will kick someone out, um, and. Wanted to see if I could answer any questions regarding uh, going to ALA next week, well, virtually. Uh, yesterday, it was with the other, with the presentations and stuff. It was all there, so I can send it again separately, yeah. I had a um, document attached. Yeah. Alright, well if, um, and I know it's a lot of information on their website, and it isn't all as intuitive as one would hope, but if you have any questions or want to talk. Offline, please reach out and let me know, uh, I'm also happy to answer any questions anyone has on my report. Okay, should I just go to reopening?
Uh, no, you were skipping board member reports.
Oh, but the reopening plan update?
Oh, yeah, correct.
Okay, uh, so I did want to give um, an update on masks, as I had told you, we are still. Requiring masks, but the tenor in the world is changing rapidly, and so starting today, um, we had surveyed staff. And last month, they were very, not at a place where even being in the staff uh, work areas. They were comfortable removing masks if they were fully vaccinated, um, but now seventy percent have said that they are, so we started allowing that today. Uh, for anyone fully vaccinated, they can remove them when they're in staff workspaces, and then we also uh. Read the room and realized that the requiring of masks is starting to provoke more angry reactions, we still have a lot of people that are, of course. Happy we are doing that, so starting next Thursday, we will be. Uh, only requiring masks for unvaccinated individuals. However, we recognize that we still have a large portion of the population that cannot get vaccinated, namely people. That are under twelve, and that we also have immunocompromised people in the community, and people that are just not ready. Um, to come into places that way yet, we received a lot of positive feedback when we were still requiring the masks after the CDC guidelines changed. And so we will be reinstituting our vulnerable hours, um, so Monday uh, through Saturday from nine to ten AM, we'll still be requiring masks. And that will be a time dedicated for those people that um, do not feel safe or are not yet able to be vaccinated to be able to come and safely. Use the library, so we're working on messaging, which will be going out to the. Community next week, but um, aside from that, everything continues, I'm sure there will be more changes yet to come.
The vulnerable hour sounds like a great compromise.
Oh, thanks Maura, yeah, that's the hope, is that we can meet the needs of all the individuals in the community.
So, uh, what date will you shift to, unvaccinated people need a mask?
Next Thursday, which is the.
A week from today.
Today's Thursday, it is indeed, so the twenty-fourth, that is correct, sorry, I, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Kate, uh, the next part of the agenda, the board member reports, this is a new section for any board member who would like. To take a moment to report on any meetings they've been to, any um, sort of. Uh, seminars or things they've attended, or anything else they feel that they should just report to the board. So I'll start with my right with Sharon, and just go down the line and ask if anybody has a report they'd like to give, Sharon, you're up.
I do not have a report I'd like to give.
Alright, thank you Maura.
I do not have a report, but thank you.
Kayhan?
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Barbara?
No.
Jamie? Abby?
No report at this time, thank you.
Alright, well, nothing exciting from this, me either, so. Um, I think though in July, we're going to have an EDC meeting, so I'll be able to talk about that next meeting, hopefully. Um, next item is the unfinished business, the RFID and circulation renovation update, Kate, who is going to do that presentation?
Oh, I'm, I was going to just do a quick verbal update. So as you all know, from the ribbon cutting last week, the lobby is open, we've been getting. A tremendous amount of compliments from the community, which is really lovely, um, and everyone seems to really be enjoying it, the automated material handler. Was delivered, so it does exist, which is very exciting, and is being installed right now. I'm happy to show any board members interested after the meeting what it looks like, it is not operational. Just yet, they're coming back tomorrow and Monday to work on it. So soon we should be fully operational with our new spaces.
Thank you Kate. So, in the new business, we've gone through the first two items, the third item is the executive director review. Which requires us to go to executive session, I'm going to ask for a motion, but give me a minute to read through it, so. If anyone would like to make the motion after I read it, please feel free to say so. Um, I would request that some board member make a motion to go into closed section, session. Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty dash two subsection C one. For the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body. Or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. And five ILCS one twenty slash two subsection C two. Collected negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, some.
Sharon, thank you for your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Barbara for the second, we will now go into executive session. Oh, you're right, Jennifer, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavine?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Alright, the motion passes, we will go into the civic room for the executive session. Uh, during that time, the live feed will remain on until we return. We are back from executive session, um, at which point in time we had a evaluation of our executive director, Kate Hall. Kate, um, just to recap some of the thoughts for the board. We have appreciated the past year, your leadership and effort on behalf of the library. You have faced significant challenges with the COVID. Um, and having to deal with a major construction project all hitting at the same time, we felt that you had done an excellent job. Taking into consideration the needs of our employees and staff, as well as the needs of the community, and balancing those needs. And doing a great job of leading us through what has been an extraordinarily challenging time. And the board is very appreciative of everything you've done, both for the library and within the community. Yeah, and taking on leadership roles and doing everything you've done, so we really do uh, value you. And we value all the effort you put forth this year, and so we thank you. Um, having said that, Sharon Berksing, if you would like to make a motion, please, for.
I'm so excited, um, yes, I'd like to make a motion to give the executive director a fifty-five hundred dollar raise.
Is there a second for Sharon's motion? Thank you Abby, Jennifer, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavine?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes, Kate, congratulations, and thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is agenda building, Kate, would you like to walk us through?
Sure, so, um, we have a few items um, for next month, we. Um, annually do a library walkthrough, so we will do that again next month, we will also be approving our annual report that we have to file with the Illinois State Library. And um, there, I'm sure will be other things that happen, but those are going to be the two main ones.
Thank you Kate, um, that's all of the items on our agenda, um, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to, oh, second, wait, you just, you can just.
Yes, I'm asking you to, go ahead Debbie.
You want me to make the motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm second, second, okay, got it.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? It sounds like eyes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Okay.
Alright.